The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, June 14th, 2022, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, which will be given this evening by Councilman Randall Fig.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our God and our heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We ask your blessing upon this meeting. We pray your will be done. We thank you for the many things you've done for us and given us life on this earth. In Jesus' name I pray these things. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Fig. Next, our petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Krasinski.
President Morton, I'd like to make the following reappointments to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Wendy Ballam, Survivor Representative. Amy Bennett, Commander of the St. Joseph County Special Crimes Unit. Larry Bennett, PH, a USB School of Social Work. The Honorable John Broden, Judge, St. Joseph Circuit Court. Mary Bautisti Jones, Staff Attorney, Indiana Legal Services Chairperson. Jesse Carlton, St. Joseph County Adult Probation. Ken Cotter, St. Joseph County Prosecutor. The Honorable Andre Gammidge, Magistrate, St. Joseph Circuit Court. Dan Gebo, Mitchell Walker Police Department. Patricia Hancock, Executive Director of Center for Positive Change, PI IP Provider. Honorable Elizabeth Hurley, Judge, St. Joseph Superior Court. Corey Nolan, St. Joseph County Council. Susan Rozi, St. Joseph County Department of Children's Services. Scott Ruskowski, Chief, St. South Bend Police Department. Dr. Kerry Sears, Medical Practitioner. And Susan Tybahn, Executive Director, YWCA, North Central Indiana.
Thank you, Councilman Krasinski. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing nominations are now closed. Do I hear a motion?
No for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Wendy Ballam, Amy Bennett, Larry Bennett, Judge John Broden, Mary Batista Jones, Jesse Carlton, Prosecutor Ken Cotter, Magistrate Andre Gammidge, Dan Gebo, Patricia Hancock, Judge Elizabeth Hurley, Councilman Corey Nolan, Susan Rozi, Chief Scott Ruskowski, Dr. Kerry Sears, and Susan Tybahn are reappointed to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 10th, 2022, public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the May 10th, 2022, public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Report from the county commissioners.
Thank you, President Morton. Andy Costelny, President of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners, offices on the seventh floor of this building. Tonight, we get to do one of the best things as a public servant, as a public official, and that's honor people doing great things in our community. And I can't think of a group more worth celebrating than the St. Joe High School Girls Softball State Champions. Sir, Auditor Hammond, if you would take it away and read the proclamation.
Be very glad to. Whereas on June 10th, 2022, St. Joseph High School Girls Softball Team won the 3A state title game. And whereas Berkeley Zake not only pitched a shutout in the final game, but hit the game-winning ground ball into right field to secure the championship by sending Haley West to score the championship's only run. And whereas the Indians did not give up a single run in all 68 innings of postseason play. And whereas head coach Earl Keith, along with assistant coaches Rachel Solmos and Leslie Zake, led the Indians through a 21-3 regular season and a clean sweep for the postseason, facing off against six ranked opponents. And whereas players Jacala McHale, Cecilia Leatherman, Morgan Sander, Haley West, Maya Newton, Matty Robleski, Riley Zake, Selena Botello, Aaron Rudge, Kaitlyn Cloppenstein, Camille Potter, Kristy Tingwald, Carly Bryant, Olivia Borzoti, Savannah Hamilton, Berkeley Zakea, and Kennedy Swope comprised this Division III State Championship team. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners and County Council of St. Joseph County in the state of Indiana, do hereby proclaim June 15th, 2022, but to be a day of celebration in honor of the successful 2022 season of the St. Joseph High School Softball State Champions. Congratulations.
So I do have a couple of things to add as well, but you can start filtering up. So tomorrow is St. Joe County, or is the St. Joe softball team is their day. So I think the main thing that's going to get you is a couple of extra prayers from Mr. K and Ms. Fink. So, other than that, Earl said he'll buy y'all lunch, too, so that's great. Just want to make a couple of comments. This St. Joe team faced the most challenging schedule that I could imagine any team facing. Not only did it play six of their seven games against ranked opponents, but they beat five -- you guys must just stay up there, because we're going to get a picture. It'll be great. They played five of the top eight teams in the state. I can't imagine a team ever having to face more difficult odds. And they showed unbelievable determination, spirit, and heart. But I do want to mention four people in particular. Number one is Haley West. She is the heart of the team. And it was so fitting that she scored the final and only run to bring home the state title. Berkeley Zake, she was the arm of the team. I've never seen any player, at any level, in any sport, handle pressure and adversity better than Berkeley. We may never see that again, the way she handled it all, well, until next year, and probably will, one more time. Savannah Hamilton, she was the soul of this team. She was a perfect example of putting the needs of her team before the needs of herself. And she's just a delightful person. She's also my niece, but still, she's delightful nonetheless. And finally, Earl Keith was the brains of this team, and I use that term loosely. But I can't imagine anyone more deserving of this success. He's dedicated over two decades of helping student athletes at St. Joe High School, so it couldn't happen to a nicer guy, Earl. So we are so very proud of you. You guys are awesome. Thank you for celebrating St. Joe County the way you did.
Are we entertaining comments now, or are we doing a photo shoot?
Yes.
We do a photo shoot first? Okay.
No, we cannot say that.
I'll say one real quick thing.
You have to stay for the whole meeting, man.
No, it's been so much fun, obviously. We couldn't imagine, well, we could. Nobody else could imagine the run we were going to make. We were always saying we wanted to play the best teams to get better, and the girls just proved, once again, that that's all they needed to do, was it didn't matter who we played, they were ready to go. And the city is celebrating us tonight over into school, and it's going to be a great time. The community has been awesome. Our family and friends have been so supportive of us all along the way. And we are just literally proud to represent St. Joe High School and the city of South Bend, Indiana, for a state title. And I will leave with the fact that, what I always say, these girls make me look good. Thank you.
And that's not easy.
And that's not easy.
Hi, Derek Dieter, 1740 Portage Avenue, St. Joe High School, class of '74, Mr. Dalton. I'd like to congratulate you girls that's being involved in athletics. I know the, all the work and, which I don't call work, playing sports and lifting weights is running is fun. But make sure that you tell your parents, your grandparents, your aunties, your uncles who bought you that $300 bat, sent you to that camp you had to go to, get the special cleats, the special gloves, the special hat, all the gear that has got you to where you are. Other coaches that have coached you, maybe Chet Wagner, whatever, along the way. But make sure everybody that helped you get to this point, which is amazing, make sure you just, if you see them, text them, call them, say, "Hey, I'm a state champ and you had a part of it." So again, appreciate it. Everybody in your careers, if you're going to college or whatever, keep up the good work. And summer workouts, start when?
263 days for today is tryouts.
Okay, there you go. All right, good job, everybody.
So you guys could stay up here for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, or if you want to depart. Any of you girls want to say anything?
Come on.
Since when?
Well, thank you all. If you want to get over to St. Joe to continue your celebration, that'd be great.
Thanks, Amy.
See you, kids. Thank you. Thank you. When we move on to the less fun stuff, listen to me talk about this year's State of the County. President Morton, esteemed members of council, Councilman Nolan, Auditor Hammond, and fellow citizens of St. Joseph County, it is with great pleasure and a little sadness I stand here tonight to deliver what will be my final State of the County address. For those who may not know, or if you do know, it's the same thing, I'll be stepping down from Commissioner at the end of the day on Friday, August 26th. I would like to thank each of you for your relationship over the years, be it how limited or how broad, and for your commitment to the citizens of St. Joseph County. I want to make a couple of points before I go any further. Number one, I will have written my own letter. I will remember having written my own letter. I'll remember signing my own letter, and I will not change my mind after I submit my letter. And the second point is, I want everyone to know this meeting is being recorded, because not always, you know, we don't always know on the front end that something's being recorded. So, there we go. All right. Despite the challenges we faced in 2020 and 2021, our county has emerged from the pandemic in an even stronger position. That's thanks to the incredible work done by our county employees. This year, three departments submitted annual reports. Summarizing those reports is my duty tonight. The Department of Adult Probation has been working on reducing recidivism rates through the continued development of a pretrial services division. They completed a total of 1,509 assessments and looked to maximize the release of low-risk offenders from being unnecessarily jailed due only to financial constraints. The department was also awarded grants from the IDOC, an Indiana Office of Court Services, for the continued operations of domestic service case processing under the direction of Judge Hurley. Archives received 317 boxes. They continue to update and merge their databases, getting their agency portal ready for public use. We also purchased the archives building to make sure they have a home for decades to come. The assessor completed the fourth year of cyclical reassessment, Phase II of approximately 30,000 residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural parcels. They processed almost 6,000 appeals and completed a review and assessment of over 10,000 business personal property accounts and over 1,400 mobile home assessments. The auditor ran the federally funded Emergency Rental Assistance Program. A total of $10 million in utility and rental assistance was paid during the year on behalf of residents affected by the COVID pandemic. The office also did accounting for the American Rescue Plan funding. Their office also created a new chart of accounts for the Tyler Munus ERP program totaling over 8,500. I want to give special thanks to John Murphy. Especially over these last months, his tireless efforts made sure that we got over $10 million in funding into the hands of those people that need it most, and more importantly, made sure they wouldn't have to give any of it back. So thank you, John, for everything that you did for our citizens. The IT department responded to 11,484 support tickets. Probably 500 of those were me forgetting what my password was. Increased cybersecurity is also a major focus and will continue to be moving forward, including ongoing training for county staff. The building department issued almost 12,000 building permits, performed 14,000 inspections, and conducted 257 plan reviews. Permits were processed in an average of 2 minutes and 41 seconds. Circuit Court, in conjunction with Superior Court, was the recipient of ARP funds to pay for much-needed technology upgrades in 12 courtrooms. This new technology will put them on par with the other counties throughout the state and match the technology in our four felony courts. I also want to thank the county council for the incredible work you did in allocating the first tranche of ARP funds. Through thoughtful consideration and listening to dozens of proposals, you were not only able to pay for some long-deferred county projects, but you're able to make significant contributions to better our community by supporting the great work done by many of our local not-for-profits. Thank you for the work. That was not an easy job you undertook. The Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau provided services to 214 families involving 169 children. They conducted co-parenting counseling workshops to address parenting skills, co-parenting skills, and high conflict issues for parents. The Ducom Center continued to decrease the number of residents and increase the number of clients on home detention. Through this hybrid model, they were able to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 and still have a recidivism rate of 3.28%, one of the lowest in the state. Emergency management was able to bring in almost $300,000 in grant funding. The department also focused on improving our early warning tornado sirens, and that work will continue throughout this year. The Department of Health was awarded a $3 million grant from the CDC to deploy a team of eight community health workers to reduce health disparities and improve the health of the community, particularly in census tracts with the highest social vulnerability indices in the county. These new community health workers will also promote lead awareness and prevention and assist with lead case management. Once again, thanks to the leadership on council for making sure this grant was accepted. The History Museum welcomed 27,000 visitors and 1,200 students. While these numbers are still down from pre-pandemic levels, it was a dramatic increase from 2020. The museum also expanded its virtual programs from 12 to 26. Planning and zoning, led by Abby Wiles, Executive Director of Area Plan, had an exceptionally busy year. Through her efforts leading St. Joseph County's comprehensive plan update, her task force successfully secured a consultant, Runville Ernstberger Associates, for this process. Working with REA, the planning and zoning team, along with the comprehensive plan several committees, has already begun the work of updating our 20-year-old comprehensive plan. They completed their first series of public meetings earlier this year and are working on compiling the information gathered to present at a summit next month. Abby also worked on the establishment of St. Joseph County Code Enforcement Division. Through a series of public and stakeholder meetings, she successfully drafted and presented three draft ordinance for code enforcement that were adopted earlier this year, and code enforcement began this spring. I also want to thank Commissioner Dieter. Without his leadership, this project simply would not have happened. So Derek continues to make a positive impact on our community. The Economic Development Division has been focused on several grant opportunities, primarily the FEMA Home Buyout Program and the New Carlisle Fiber Conduit Project. Workers completed on the new 27-mile redundant fiber loop in the New Carlisle area, and an additional award for 1.4-mile loop going into the town of New Carlisle will be completed this year. All properties purchased through the FEMA in the Drillwoods neighborhood have been demolished and returned to open green space in perpetuity per FEMA guidelines. This was an important step to help those families tragically impacted by the past severe flooding events. These two projects illustrate our commitment to providing resource to all areas of the county. All this work was done while focusing on their primary goal of assisting with economic development projects throughout the county, and they receive an average of 15 project leads per month. The Division of Public Works addressed 3394 service requests reconditioning all 45 miles of county-owned gravel roads, and was awarded, among other grants, a $3 million congestion mitigation and air quality grant for a roundabout improvement at the intersection of Douglas and Bittersweet. They're also working on a robust paving program for 2022, thanks to a significant investment of ARP funds. Between the first and second tranches of ARP funds, I'm proud to say our roads and bridges will get an additional $11.5 million for improvements that will occur in the next 12 months. The Juvenile Justice Center Detention Department continues to receive high praise from the IDOC auditors, achieving 100% on the mandatory standards and 98% of the recommended standards. The CASA program was also able to advocate for 871 children. The Department of Maintenance successfully completed several projects this year. Most notably was the much-needed renovation to the county city building elevators. Parks and Recreation benefits the community, public health, and economic development by managing over 1,300 acres of greens, of public access green space, river and stream corridors, wetlands, and woods. Last year, the department welcomed over 342,000 visitors to its parks and off-site events. We are all fortunate to have such a robust park system here in St. Joseph County. The Penn Township Assessor has been working to audit personal property filings and handled approximately 1,200 appeals. 99% of those were resolved at the township level and did not need to go before the county's Property Tax Assessment Review Board. Special combination of Mike Caffetlon, the assessor in Penn Township, providing public meetings and taking care of these at a local level to give people the level of service that they need. Sheriff's Department services 40% of the population of the county and is responsible for patrolling 85% of the land area. The Jail Division booked 6,735 inmates for an average daily population of 609. Thankfully, none of them named Hammond or Costelny. Portage Manor worked through 2021 and continues to focus this year on a viable solution to continue operations, whether through a new building or a public-private partnership. The Department of Procurement focused on end-user training for the Tyler Munus ERP system. As you know, Director Bree Roberts stepped back as project lead for our new ERP system in January. I want to thank her for the Herculean effort that she put forth to try and get this project as far as it is. The ERP project is now under the management of our former IT Director, Scott Seth. The financial piece is practically complete, and Scott is working with our HR department to finish the build-out of the HR human capital modules. It is our hope that we should be able to go live with all of this January of 2023. Prosecuting Attorney saw a cyber crimes unit become a model for the state and across the nation. The state of Indiana has funded nine other units that mirror the program developed in St. Joe County. We are clearly leaders on this front, sending our experts to train over 1,200 people worldwide. Public Safety Communications Consortium, PSAP, received over 450,000 calls and 1,329 incoming and outgoing texts in 2021. Dispatched over 172,000 calls for service, 85% of them were police-related. Public Defender has 21 felony public defenders who handled over 1,200 cases. At the JJC, public defenders handled 620 cases. The department also handled more than 2,000 misdemeanors last year. Purdue Extension hosted 99 learning events with over 3,300 program participants. 4-H program has 10,069 total members, who presented 985 lockstop projects and 950 static projects exhibited at the 2021 4-H Fair. Officer the Recorder recorded over 47,000 documents. 86% of those were filed electronically. Soil and Water Conservation put almost 300 acres of cover crops in the ground in St. Joe County. Superior Court has held 75 in-person jury trials. The court also saw four judges retire last year and welcomed four new judges to the bench, led by former county attorney Jamie Woods. Lastly, the Department of Voter Registration updated almost 30,000 voter records through voter registration applicants. Looking back on all we accomplished last year, our employees, department heads, elected officials, and appointed board members, who often volunteer their time and talent, I can honestly say the state of our county is strong. Well, 2022 is certainly off to a good start. I think we have a couple of things that I'd like to recommend. Number one, we must continue to allocate resources to the ERP project. We're close, but we simply must get this done. This will significantly improve managing our financial systems, but also make each department more productive. I'd like the county to continue our commitment to assist with the mental health crisis. There is great work being done in this space, but I think it's important that we continue to play a role. Aside from helping those in need, it is much less expensive to give people the help they need versus putting them in jail. Everyone wins. We need to continue to invest in our people, and I recommend we raise the salaries of our key personnel and department heads. The county is doing amazing things, and we need to make sure we take care of our own and those amazing people who are doing those things so we keep our momentum going. I'd like to recommend that the county hire a county administrator, which I will be presenting to council next month. We've had a significant amount of institutional knowledge lost over the last few years, but we need to make sure we help stabilize county government moving forward. Speaking of moving forward, we need to continue exploring the option of relocating the South Shore Station to the west side of the airport. Next week is the official groundbreaking event in Michigan City for the Double Track Project, and we must do everything possible to maximize our investment to bring 90-minute service from South Bend to Chicago. We have taken important steps to stabilize Portage Manor operations, but we need to finalize plans for the entire campus. From construction of a highway garage to assisting Chet Wagner Little League to the possible construction of a new facility, we need a clear path. 2022 could quite possibly be the most significant year of economic development in the history of our county. An important step project, important step could begin tonight with Project Honeysuckle. Passage of this will help send a message that St. Joe County remains open for business and help power the way for our future growth. I'd also like to see the county continue our mission to help reduce homelessness, and that's why I'm working with the city of South Bend to give them four to five acres on the Portage Manor campus that they can begin using to construct permanent housing. One final piece of advice. Over the last years, it's gotten very difficult to be on different sides of an issue, not just talking here, but just in the world itself. And politics has always been a full-contact sport, but in the last few years, it's turned into a blood sport. It's not enough that we can just disagree with each other, but it has to become personal. I know it's easier for many people to tear something down than to build something up, but we simply need to do a better job. So, Roff, we have a deal. When one of us ends up in Miller's Merry Manor, the other one's going to show up with a six-pack of IPAs, and I plan on fulfilling that agreement. But it got me to thinking. It's like the old cartoon with Ralph the Wolf and Sam the Sheepdog. So they show up for work, and they punch the time clock, and the whistle goes off, and they go at it. The sheepdog's trying to protect the sheep. The wolf's trying to get the sheep. They do anything within their power to make that happen, then the whistle goes off. They stop, punch out, walk out, talk about what they're going to do that evening, or what may happen. And I like to think of taking one step further. I like to think once in a while, they go out for a beer. This cartoon reminds me a lot of the world today. We have no problem going after the things we disagree with, and we also very passionate about the things that we think are right. Sometimes even when people disagree with us. But what's missing is going out for a beer afterward. We need to treat each other better and agree that sometimes we'll just disagree, and that's okay. So basically what I'm saying, I think we all need to commit to drinking more beer. It's been an honor and privilege to serve as the people of St. Joe County as a commissioner, the last 10 years as president. I look forward to our continued bright future for the next decade. Thank you, and may God continue to bless us all.
Next on the agenda, report from Council Special Committee, Mr. Lindsey.
I believe you're muted.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. End of thing by one introduction, but we just go ahead and get right to it. Yes, that means I'm going to get right to it. So, so my name is Mike Lindsey. I lead the Performance Assurance and Energy Leadership Teams at Performance Services. I'm just going to give you a short update on our progress on energy savings and the Performance and Energy Leadership Program. And so I wanted to just give a quick reminder of the project we completed, working with you in twenty nineteen in the spring. So, we're just at the end of our third year of most project energy performance. That project included a number of improvements to various buildings throughout the county. We upgraded the lighting, the LED, and a number of facilities. We installed new controls and optimized the existing systems that were already in place. We upgraded HVAC systems and so forth. Really, a big portion of that work included HVAC systems at the JJC. I just wanted to go through a real quick reminder of the work that's completed there on that project. We're very proud of that project, as I hope you are as well, as well as our performance of that project. To date, we're just wrapping up our third year of the guaranteed energy savings. It ends in May. We've got the utility bills now, so we're working to put that report together. But just from a utility and energy perspective, which is natural gas, electricity, and water, it was guaranteed to save a little over five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars annually. In year one, the project saved over six hundred and thirty-two thousand. In year two, it was six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and those savings continue to grow. One thing I wanted to show you in relation to how projects of this nature kind of hedge against inflation and so forth. So, this, this graph shows you our, our base year for the project was in twenty sixteen, seventeen. You've spent that year in, in natural gas, electricity, and water on the buildings we worked in, a little over one point six million dollars. That orange line is just taking that baseline usage and applying inflation and energy rate factors, so water rate factors. So, had you not done anything back at that time and just continued operating the buildings the way you were with the same systems, you would have spent one point nine six million dollars in the last twelve months. What you actually spent in the last twelve months was one point two four or five million. So, it's a significant reduction in out-of-pocket cost. It's going to continue to, to grow and expand, and so the savings we measure is based on energy saved and water saved, but really to look at the impact of a project like this is looking at how, once you reduce energy one time and you maintain that energy reduction, how the savings grow in terms of its budget's impact. I don't know if you have any questions on that, or if any questions, you can just interrupt me or not, I'll keep going.
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I, I think you're garbled up a little bit. I'm not sure if I heard you right. Does the orange line include utility company in, increases or just normal inflation? So, if AP raised their rates in twenty twenty, is that included in that orange line?
Yeah, that's the actual rate increases. So, had you taken the same usage that you had in sixteen, seventeen, applied that year's rates, that would have been your expenditure.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then the green line is what you actually spent. And then the piece I wanted to highlight tonight, where you asked me to come talk about tonight, was we included in that project what we call our Energy Leadership Program. And so it recognizes there are two things that really impact how much energy you use, now efficiently use that energy. One is your systems, how efficient they are, how much they operate, kind of in terms of how much energy to use with the efficiency of systems. Then the other piece is how you operate those systems, how you behave in the buildings, do you leave lights on, do you turn them off when you're done with them? Just all those behavior-type things that impact energy usage. And so, like I said, we like to say, equipment determines how efficiently you use that. Behavior determines how much you actually use. And we kind of couple those things together to, to get the maximum savings out of a project. And so in that project, we included setting up the program and those standards. We worked with a number of your departments on ways they can save energy and behavior they can do to help maximize energy savings. And we also included two years of an energy manager position, which is a person, or they're in the buildings, working with staff and kind of coaching them how to save energy, and just keeping an eye in general on all of your building systems, operations, people and so forth. And so that energy manager spends time in buildings or, or touring buildings or driving by buildings in evenings, on weekends, and making sure things are shut off and things are not operating when they shouldn't be operating. And then coaches and works with the employees to kind of resolve issues that might be occurring of that nature. And so we provided that, that talent or that person in the field for the first two years within the project. A year ago, you elected to continue with that person, and so we provided that individual, that staff person, through the last twelve months, in year three, that total cost of that was a little over fifty thousand dollars. And so now we're to the point where we're at your end of year three, and the step is to make the decision on, do we include that again, contract with us again for that same fee? We would include that for the twelve months. Do you hire someone like that direct, or do you eliminate that program and lose that savings altogether? And I'll just jump to the last screen, which I think is the one that you were asking for to see. When we put the program together, we projected the savings from that or guaranteed the savings from that program and that individual to be about a hundred and ten thousand dollars annually. And what we've seen is we've exceeded those, that goal, and it's grown annually. So, in year one, it's about a hundred and thirty, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand. End of the year last year, we had about a hundred and sixty-five thousand savings. This year, we're so reconciling the bills, we think it's going to be about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of savings from directly tied to that effort. And so I guess this is the end of my presentation. I'm just going to say, I'm here today to ask any questions you have to see if there's anything else we can do to help you and, you know, do you want to continue with that working through us? Do you want to, you know, hire that person? We would help you hire the individual that we're using right now, since it's a citizen there in the area that works part-time doing this. Or you always have the option to just, just continue altogether with that program.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Nolan?
Yeah. Could you provide the thirty-second version of how you quantify the savings that's directly from the leadership? So, he's, he's coaching people, and he's changing, hopefully, changing behaviors and things like that, but how do you quantify the number, a hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars for this year?
So, the thirty-second version is when we did the project, we know what savings are going to come from those steps, and we have key performance indicators that we measure from those savings. For example, lighting improvements, runtime and improvements, electricity are the savings. So, we basically look at the, all of the savings throughout the entire project. We can identify what savings directly came from equipment, behooves and so forth, and then we basically figure out what is left over in terms of beyond what we can calculate and have safety factor for our savings above and beyond what was projected and, and can be calculated from the improvements. Does that make sense?
It does. That's what I wanted everybody to hear. Thank you.
Questions, comments from council?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Root?
My question's actually for Mr. Dalton. These savings, have we adjusted the annual budget to reflect these savings in any way?
Some departments have adjusted their budgets to reflect the savings. Some departments are actually seeing increased spending. I'm sure that the energy people can speak to that, but there, there are generally increased rates. So, we are paying in some cases more than we were paying in two thousand and seventeen because rates went up. So, some departments have had to increase slightly, a lot less than they would have had to increase.
Any other questions from council or comments?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzarit?
Mr. Lindsey, did you, I couldn't quite hear you. Did you say the energy leadership position, is that part-time or full-time?
It is part-time.
Part-time?
Yeah.
Okay. To what extent is that person, I guess, how many hours would that be? And are they in every building? Are they, I look at some things, you know, such as water usage, low-flow capacity, plumbing fixtures, things like that. Have they gone that far, that, that deep into it or not?
Yeah, so all, all these numbers include all utilities, so those include water. And we did the project, you know, four or five years ago, there was a significant effort to upgrade all the water services so you would be as efficient as you could be with, with equipment.
Thank you.
And that, that person is part-time, so that cost includes about three days a week, and that cost includes then all their travel amongst buildings, getting in and out, those kind of things.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Lindsey.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill number eighty-three twenty-two?
Eighty-three twenty-two, Saint Joseph County, Indiana. An Emerald Point, two zero two one LLC, Agreement for Payment in Illeu of Tax, Petitioner, Infrastructure Planning and Growth.
Bill number eighty-three twenty-two is assigned to the Budget Administration Committee.
Bill eighty-four twenty-two, An Ordnance Amending and Supplementing Title Fifteen Land Usage, Chapter One Fifty-four, Planning and Zoning, the Saint Joseph County Code is amended for addressed property totaling two hundred and ninety-seven, more or less, acres located at twelve, one-two-zero-zero-zero Cleveland Road on both sides of Bittersweet, from A Agricultural District to R Single Family District, Petitioner, Saint Joe Farm Limited Liability Company. Bill eighty, oops, sorry, my apologies.
Bill number eighty-four twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill eighty-five twenty-two, An Ordnance Amending and Supplementing Title Fifteen Land Usage, Chapter One Fifty-four, Planning and Zoning, the Saint Joseph County Code is amended for property located at one-two-five-five-five Adams Road, State Road Twenty-three, one-two-five-two-zero Beckley Street, and two unaddressed adjacent parcels northwest of the intersection of Adams Road, State Road Twenty-three, and Main District, Bittersweet Road, in Granger, from B Business District to C Commercial District, Petitioner, one-two-five-five-five State Road Twenty-three LLC.
Bill number eighty-five twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill eighty-six twenty-two, An Ordnance Amending and Supplementing Title Fifteen Land Usage, Chapter One Fifty-four, Planning and Zoning, the Saint Joseph County Code is amended for property located at vacant land east and adjacent to one-two-six-five-seven State Road Twenty-three, from B Business District to C Commercial District, Petitioner, EquiAmerica Properties LLC, Richard Reed, member.
Bill number eighty-six twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill eighty-seven twenty-two, An Ordnance Amending and Supplementing Title Fifteen Land Usage, Chapter One Fifty-four, Planning and Zoning, the Saint Joseph County Code is amended for property located at one-four-zero-four-two State Road Twenty-three, O Office District to R Single Family District, Petitioner, Connie E. Soto, Reconcilable Trust.
Bill number eighty-seven twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill eighty-eight twenty-two, An Ordnance Approving the Petition for a Special Use filed by Indiana Waste Systems, Inc., for property being located at one-five-zero-zero-one Shively Road and unaddressed abutting parcel to east with frontage on Shively Road, Petitioner, Indiana Waste Systems, Inc.
Bill number eighty-eight twenty-two is assigned to the Land, Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill eighty-nine twenty-two, An Ordnance to the Saint Joseph County Council, amending Title Fifteen, Chapter One Fifty-four, Land Usage of Saint Joseph County Code is, Code to revise wireless telecommunication facility abandonment and removal bonding, Petitioner, Saint Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Bill number eighty-nine twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill ninety-two twenty-two, An Ordnance to vacate a public way or a public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of Saint Joseph County public way or public place, Petitioner, Fur Road, Fur Road Holdings LLC, five-one-zero-one-three Gumwood Road, Granger, Indiana, four-six-five-three-oh USA.
Bill number ninety-two twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, next on the agenda, resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill number fifty-two twenty-two?
Fifty-two twenty-two, A Resolution of the Saint Joseph County Council authorizing approval of an Economic Development Agreement between Saint Joseph County, the Saint Joseph County Redevelopment Commission, and Honeysuckle Solar LLC.
President Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion on fifty-two twenty-two, that that be held in committee.
There's a, there's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I believe we have to take a roll, Mr. Hammer? I do have to take a roll. Mr. Krasinski? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
And Mr. Katanzarit?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Motion carries nine and zero. As the record show, that bill number twenty, fifty-two twenty-two goes back to committee at request of Councilman Krasinski. Next on the agenda are salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill number seventy-five twenty-two?
Seventy-five twenty-two, An Ordnance Amending, ordinance ninety-five twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-two, Petitioner, Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hi, yes, this is Amy Rupee, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. And before you is a request that does not change our budget any. We are just wanting to increase the hourly rate of our part-time vaccinators to be in-line equivalent to what our full-time staff make.
Any questions for Amy? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll now open a public hearing on Bill number seventy-five twenty-two.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on seventy-five twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Any further comments from any council member on seventy-five twenty-two? The motion was made by Mr. Krasinski, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from anyone on seventy-five twenty-two? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarit?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine and zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number seventy-five twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number seventy-one twenty-two?
An Ordnance Amending, ordinance ninety-five twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of Saint Joseph County for the year twenty twenty-two, Petitioner, Building and Maintenance.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number seventy-one twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Kim Karkowitz, Human Resource Director, Saint Joseph County, offices on the seventh floor of this building. I have been working with the building engineer on this request. This is for a clerk for our mailroom. We used to have two clerks in the mailroom back in twenty eighteen. We did make a change to one clerk since then and have had multiple people from different departments try to pitch in and help out. That has not been the best result, so in that we are asking for two clerks to be back in the mailroom, especially now that our long-term clerk has put in for retirement. So, we're going to be seeing her move in that direction. So we're going to be seeing her move in that direction.
Any questions from council for the petitioner?
One. Is it your expectation, or at least to look at it, that you're going to have two for a while, and then when the long-term clerk retires, that it might go, might stay at one?
So right now, as we have it with the two clerks, they're going to be splitting their activities between the mailroom and the mail activity and the greeting down in the lobby for helping the community in where they need to go throughout our facility.
With different days.
Different days, rotation, uh-huh.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner? Mr. Katanzright?
If, if the city of South Bend would vacate the building, would that affect the workload of the mailroom?
Very little.
Very little?
Because they do, their mail is an outsource, so they really don't run through our machine or our, the most that we may do is pick up from the post office and they come to the mailroom to grab it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number seventy-one twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill seventy-one twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill number seventy-one twenty-two is made by Councilwoman Hess and was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on seventy-one twenty-two? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Let's record show that Bill number seventy-one twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Bill number seventy-two twenty-two, at the request of the petitioner, will go back to committee to allow the petitioner to provide further information on this bill. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number seventy-three twenty-two.
An Ordnance Amending, ordinance ninety-five twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty-twenty-two, Human Resources.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number seventy-three twenty-two comes to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Thank you. This is developing a program for alternative duty for workers' comp cases, allowing employees to be able to come back into the workforce under restrictions per the doctor's recommendations to be able to get them back into a normalcy. And also, doctors have found that if you get back into that normal routine, it helps in recovery. It will also help limit the, or reduce the overall cost of the claim. We would like to make sure that that is done properly with each department, each position that that has available. And with that comes extra duties to this investigators to follow up and record and maintain.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing on Bill seventy-three twenty-two. Does anyone, anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill seventy-three twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number seventy-three twenty-two is made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Council, Councilman Katanzright. Any further comments from any council member on seventy-three twenty-two? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Fig.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Let's record show that Bill number seventy-three twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number seventy-four twenty-two.
An Ordnance Amending, ordinance ninety-five twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty-twenty-two, Petitioner, Human Resources.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number seventy-four twenty-two comes to the full council without recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
So this request is for the benefits coordinator in HR and the personnel coordinator in HR. Honorable council members, you know, implementing the ERP system for St. Joseph County has added duties to some employees to be able to build it for the county's needs. Departments like the Auditor's Office and Procurement has seen those duties being added already, and moved to the new system is something that was needed. And this council had agreed that compensation was warranted with those extra duties. In the HCM piece, it is the same and different in ways. Our current system does not have what we would have in HCM. It is a place where you can just store documents, has limited employee information. That's what we have. So when we're moving to a system that is being built, with that, it is going to be built with things like being able to help departments, employees, department heads, elected officials, look at many different things for our staff. The Human Resource Department is very excited to be able to provide St. Joseph County employees this kind of offering by managing their workforce effectively, optimizing their productivity. But many of these things have to be built. So things like our personnel coordinator will not just be continuing in the hiring efforts of the hundred-and-fourteen positions that we need to fill by doing job fairs like she's doing on June twenty-eighth from noon to three here at the county city building lobby, doing orientations, helping departments in their hiring, but also putting in the information for new hires, terminations, changes from salaries to positions in two systems right now because we are trying to implement it. It's also building this program, building this for the county staff. So this is building a system where application tracking, improving onboarding process, personal actions are taken away from a paper process that is going to be beneficial in the future and be a time saver for all, but also improving performance reviews, being able to have a structure for that and disciplinary and the area of training. Where we had talked about when we were in committee, I gave you guys kind of the report on what HR is doing. Those are little things that we're prepping to give you this. So in top of the regular work that they're doing, they are going to be building these items for the county. This is just the start of what HL will be working with departments for full usage of this program. We're going to continue to grow, continue to add, continue to build in this program as departments see more need, more functionality needed. So from talent, hiring talent, electronic onboarding, employee training and development, identifying that, the capacity gaps that they may have, employee retention, effective performance appraisals, providing data access to employees for career tracks, succession planning, improve organic growth. Those are some of the things that we are going to be building and that personal coordinator is going to be involved in doing on top of the regular duties that she has, supporting the employees of the county. Our benefits coordinator will be building the benefit piece for employee enrollment review of information and communication that feeds to the vendors and providers. So we have one thousand two hundred and sixty-four employees, two hundred and fifty retirees, and twenty-one different providers that we will have to put feeds in place for. I don't know if you remember way back when, when we were doing the paper enrollment, you would get your packet, you would checkmark what you want. All of that has been streamlined through the portal that the county has made. Now, HR has already built this twice. So we've done it a couple of times. But again, it still takes time to do. It still takes additional time and effort. This process is one that's going to be beneficial in a lot of different ways, going to building that accessibility for the employee to see if they change a benefit, how this is going to affect my check at home. Makes it important for them to have that visual, be able to see that full compensation, and for it to be in one system so that we're not having to take it from one system and add it to the other. This goes from the deductions being added to the paychecks to the provider getting the information on the enrollment. So with that, complete reporting for departments being available when they have grants that they are looking at that are paying for the benefits, being able to have that accessible to them, completing reporting all around, communicating with providers, employees, having that access. ERP system, the MUNA system is a packaged product, yes, but it still needs tailoring that must be done for the functioning correctly for St. Joseph County. It's not an out-of-the-box ready product. And with that, please take this into consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Mr. File here. First one is later this month, we're going into budget reviews, and at that time, we got a chance to look at all of our departments and their problems, as well as hear from our controller and, and others about what the taxpayers have and the way of income to take care of this. So I think, I think that it should be part of the budget process that we keep adding or taking care of these matters. Secondly, we've also approved some, some people for this department earlier in this session, and, and we also have a new system coming onboard at least by January of next year. All of that taken into account, I would recommend that we not proceed with this at this time.
Can I respond? The January launch date for the HCM is not going to be able to be done unless I have the people to do it, to build it, to put it in place.
We will be hearing a lot of time from you and all other departments on how many people they need and how much more money they need to do what they're already doing. I think that this is premature to take this up in it, when it's part of our budget process, much better handled as part of our budget process than individual departments coming to us on the eve of a budget process that starts later this month.
But you're saying you need it, you need this change now because the budget is in reference to twenty-three? Is that, is that what you're saying?
That is what I'm saying. And right now, the ERP and how we have done it, they've looked at the financial first. We've looked at the payroll, and payroll is a part of the HCM, but the HCM hasn't even started their real build. With that, to build that, to put that time in, to ask my people to do extra, extra, extra than what they already do. And I, I understand doing the budget, doing the budget for twenty-twenty-three. You guys have hard decisions to make. I, I get that. I wouldn't be asking for this if that workload and the duties that they are going to have to do to get us to that point of launch of January one is not one that is warranted, which you guys have approved and warranted previously with other positions that we're looking at that same thing. I'm not asking for a different dollar amount or any more than that other offering.
Okay, so these are increases to existing personnel, is that correct?
Correct.
So by providing those increases, that will incentivize those people to, to do the additional work that they need to do?
They're going to have additional duties put forward to them.
Are they going to be able to do that, the, the two people that you're looking at?
Them along with myself, which of course, I did not ask for anything from myself for that.
And without this additional increase, you see?
I'm going to have to look at seeing if I can get some part-time help to come in off of a part-time line item, or I don't know.
Because you're suggesting that if, if this doesn't pass, that will further delay the launch of the?
It, it may because I can't ask them to do this large of a load of work without compensating them more.
It, it did sound like quite a bit.
It's.
What you listed sounded like quite a bit of work, I must say. So how much of a delay would, would you?
I can't even estimate it, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Katanzright? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody else? Mr. Katanzright?
It's Hugh, Mr. Dalton. So looking at this increase request, we are at June. It's really behalf of what she's asking, it will actually be increasing this for, for the rest of the year, right? I'm assuming you're not looking at retroactive, right, Ken?
No.
It's a great chance for half a year. Yeah. So instead of being truly a thirty-nine-hundred-dollar raise for each of those employees, it's only going to be about a two-thousand-dollar raise. Is that correct? On the paycheck for this year?
This year's spending will be an additional nineteen million dollars.
Per employee?
The salary will be increased to the full year salary, thirty-nine-hundred dollars.
Next year, if, if we agree to that at budget time. So I mean, I think as a compromise measure, I, in, in response to what Dick's talking about, I think we can still debate this more at budget time. I don't think it's too unreasonable, given what the workload might be, and it really isn't going to be the full nine-thousand-dollar increase for this year. And, you know, and we would have to agree to do that at budget time if we're going to keep those salaries in place or not. So that's why I'm, I was curious about that. Thank you.
That would be reasonable. Yeah, but it, it would be pretty counterintuitive if we did it now and didn't follow through for next year because the.
That has seldom happened, that we rolled somebody's paycheck.
That's what I'm saying. Seldom, huh? Right, right. That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
I think he took some away from Mike because he's not managing IT.
That's true.
That's an example.
And it was mine, right?
These people are buried, they're, they're buried. I mean, to her point, they're just, they're just really buried. It's a pretty rough situation.
I'd like to make a suggestion, if I might, for your consideration, for Mr. File's consideration, for Mr. Katanzright's consideration. I would like to offer the full amount for this year. Half now, they get this bump, and at January one, twenty-twenty-three, we have a successful HCM go-live, the other half bonus.
You know.
Next year is next year, whatever we decide during the budget process.
I, I think that's a really interesting idea, partially because you're suggesting that if we don't do this, this won't get done. But Mike is saying that they're buried, and I'm kind of wondering, if I got a five-percent raise, is that going to be the thing that makes me work thirty-percent harder? Or, or maybe these people are already working near to their capacity, but that would actually create an incentive to, to maybe go beyond their capacity, you know? So, so I like that idea, but the, the real thing I wanted to speak to is this ERP project was supposed to save us money. And this isn't your problem, right, uniquely? But man, we are endlessly assigning new resources and creating new positions and dedicating staff from other places to, to this, you know? And, and we just put the, the folks from the energy management to task over fifty-thousand dollars. I, I can't even imagine what we've put on this, and, and we still haven't really seen like any sort of cost-benefit analysis. And that, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's an investment we'll get dividends on at some point in the future, but that was a question I had asked when we very first voted on the ERP, and I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, I could address some of that. We also, we knew that we were going to have to, because of the company that we went with, and I know you were not for it, and I respect that, I appreciate that. We were in a bind financially, that we were going to have to do the, our employees were going to have to do the bulk of the work, and we knew we had to have quote-unquote "backfill." And we, some of us were more successful than others in terms of doing that, but we knew that was going to be an extra cost. This is the backfill cost. This is what we're talking about. So we knew those costs were going to happen, but another area is it didn't cost more because we didn't backfill. Now, some of our people have driven to, have been driven to exhaustion, to be true, to be fair, but they're, they're continuing to plug on. But so what, what she's looking for is that backfill piece, in essence, I mean, she's, she talked about the alternative to hiring other people. This what, this, this to me, makes sense to me, given what my experience. This, to me, makes sense to me, given what my experiences and John's is in the auditor's And then in terms of like, how much money we're going to be saving, this is, as you know, is a system that's going to help our employees work more efficiently.
It's more than money, too.
It is, it's way more. We know that. I mean, I'm not going to quibble with you, but, you know, but there are a lot of aspects to it. But these guys, these people have worked really hard, and they're trying the best they can.
Kim, this question is, I guess, directly for you. If a lot of the duties you've explained sound like it's more of a rollout process, and some of the current burden that they're bearing seems associated maybe with the jobs market, those two things, to me, seem a little transitory, where ultimately, a lot of this rollout will be complete, and these will become more procedural things rather than creating things. And the jobs market is likely to improve someday, making that piece of it easier. So I guess I would definitely be more in favor of what Corey suggested, but shaping it more as a bonus now and an incentive bonus for later, and not a permanent salary adjustment.
I can say my department is not the only one that's going to be a make or break, this project go live. And I would hate for my staff to not get something because something else wasn't done in another department, in another area.
Corey's suggestion is they would get exactly what you've asked for, at minimum.
Your people in your department would get exactly what you're asking for right now because they're only getting half, we're halfway done with the year.
Okay.
And maybe more.
If the go-live is successful, then there's an additional bonus. I know you can't control that, but I can't control everything in the world either.
Right.
Additional bonus or additional...
Well, and...
The other half of the raise.
Okay. You said bonus.
Well, I think you referred to a bonus.
Because this is, for this year, for a bonus, we will decide in July or August what our budget for 2023 is going to look like. It could be more than this, oh, I don't know.
As I understand, it came to us from the committee without recommendation. Is there more discussion about why it was without recommendation?
I think that's what we're doing right now.
Right.
Well, but the committee reviewed it and sent it without recommendation, which I think indicates they had some questions. So what were those questions?
The questions that are being asked right now, that's what we're doing.
I thought that's what the committee was doing.
We decided it needed further discussion, which is why it came without recommendation. That's what we're doing right now.
Any other questions from counsel, or any further discussion?
My only question is that if we go ahead with this, it seems to me we should have a proviso that once the new system's in effect, that we review the need for these kinds of people, because the new system's supposed to make, especially in the case of HR, is supposed to make things more efficient, and for us to have less staff instead of more. That's how the whole thing was sold to me to begin with, and I still think that's what we should be getting out of it. There is, HR in particular, has a provision in the new system that supposedly was sold to us as a good system that would save time in the HR department of a major amount. So if we do this as a temporary, then I think it should be reviewed on the basis of the new system helping this situation out, so these aren't permanent people that come onboard and stay here after the new system comes into vogue.
My recollections, when we chose this particular software, it was not an out-of-the-box-ready system, which is why we had a reduced upfront cost for that, knowing that there would be additional cost in personnel to make sure...
I thought the HR piece of the new system was, our vendor was field strength to us. The HR piece of the new system was state-of-the-art and excellent.
Yeah, they're going to be doing, Mr. File, they're actually going to be doing far more, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Karkowitz, probably far more with this system than you'd be doing without it. May require more people to do that. But I mean, that's the whole, it's like supercharging the department. Unlike the auditor's office, we maintain the same amount of folks, you're not going to be in that spot.
Well, just help me with this. Are you saying that when the new system goes in effect, it's going to take more time instead of less?
With HR, they're doing far, far more than they were doing previously. Is that...
In other words, the new system, instead of automating their work, makes it harder? Is that what you're saying?
I think you know exactly what I mean, Mr. File. Ms. Karkowitz, I think you do.
No, I don't. I'm sorry, I don't know what you mean. I thought the system was supposed to make HR more...
I explained myself.
So, Kim, this will add, right, a performance review component that you don't have right now, that does take people power to make sure that happens, is that correct?
So, as I showed you guys on our quarterly review in last meeting, your HR department is doing a lot more than your HR department had done in the past. Your HR department was that of, most people thought of insurance only, right? They were the ones that carried the insurance, you had questions, you go to them. The departments need more. They need more support. The employees need more support. And that's where this is going to come into place, is giving that support. Yes, HR is going to be restructuring how some things are done. Yes, there's going to be some animated processes put in place that paper shuffling is going to go away. But it's also going to provide departments key things to actually help their staff. Things like areas that need to have training, tracking training, being able to have a career path, different career paths for different jobs. Right now, we don't have that. And I can tell you, with a lot of the exits that I'm seeing going out, is people like, I didn't see any room for advancement for me here. So we want to help that, give those departments that extra. And yes, it is going to take time for us to build those, because again, departments aren't doing a lot of this right now. So it's going to be teaching, educating, training, and implementing it as we go to. So the basic bare minimum that we're needing to get, the HCM, to get it going, is our benefits able to be enrolled, payroll able to be run through the system, our actions for employees to be able to be done through the HCM, our applications, our onboarding. Those are the bare minimum. But we are going further than that, because our staff deserves it, our employees deserve it.
Would it be fair to say that a lot of the back and forth in the conversation with this ERP system was based upon the automation of the system as opposed to things you're talking about now?
Correct.
Is that a fair statement?
Because right now, we don't have the things that we've been talking about. We don't have that in place.
So I mean, I think that's why this perception of now we're adding more, now we're talking about adding more people, and doing this and doing that, you know? I'm just saying, I think the majority of the conversation was about the automation of the system, not everything you're talking about now, when it was presented to us. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, because I was going, yay, get me anything, please, because what we have...
And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm saying that's part of this quandary that we're looking at now.
Right.
Or dilemma, or whatever you want to say. That's just my opinion.
I do remember the conversation, though, that we knew this, like Diana and Corey both said, and everybody, you know, it was not an out-of-the-box system, it was going to require, it was going to be a lot more intensive on the implementation side, that I do recall.
No, I'm not saying that that was not discussed at all. That's not my implication at all. I'm saying, I think the perception of this ERP system was talked about the majority of the time, as far as being, you know, a technology update that was sorely needed in this county.
For the financial system.
I'm not saying the other part was not discussed at all. I'm not saying that.
Yeah, so we didn't talk a whole heck of a lot about human capital management. We didn't, that wasn't a...
That's my point.
A lot of the conversation focused on the financial side.
Correct.
So that could be part of the confusion.
Correct.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
And with the ERP, is going to be linking to that budgeting, that GL, that helping those departments in structuring their budget because of their open positions, being able to have a true, real vision of what positions they have open. But all of that, the personnel, as we're running it on both systems right now, the personnel coordinator, when somebody says, hey, I've got this job posting I need to put up, they have to go and say, okay, where's your budget line? What's the job class or job code? If it's not built in there, they're building it, so it's accessible in there for it to be posted. So it's going to be helpful in the long run. There is more work that has to be done on our end, but it's to make the whole thing work in the way it's going to be beneficial for the departments.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Hearing now, I'll open a public hearing on Bill Number 7422. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on 7422?
Mr. Morton?
Ms. Katanzright?
Can I make a motion to amend 7422?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor to approve Bill Number 7422. Do I hear a second? That was made by Councilman Nolan. And it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 7422?
I'm willing to vote for it on the basis that when the new system goes in effect, these personnel decisions are reviewed at that time.
Now, when does Mark make his amendment?
There's a, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Motion to amend.
There are a motion to amend Bill Number 7422.
Keeping with what Mr. Nolan and Mr. Kanarecki spoke about, I make a motion that we bonus these two individual employees in the amount of $1,956 each now. And when and if we go live in 2023, we give them the additional bonus of $1,956. And we'll discuss salaries at budget time. Is there a point order here?
Mr. President, if you have a motion and a second on the floor, that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
That needs to be addressed. There's a motion and a second, there's a motion on the floor that needs to be seconded.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay. Is this about the motion, is this on...
This is the original motion to pass. Okay.
Then it would pass without being amended.
Right. See, amendment should come first.
Right, that needs to be addressed first.
Amended.
That's what I was, yeah, the amendment has to be addressed first, right, Mike?
Nope. We have a second floor to approve the original motion and passage of the ordinance as presented.
So if they say no to that, then they can go back to an amended version?
Okay.
Gotcha.
It needs to be addressed on that first, it can't be seconded.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Clerk, will you please take the roll on the original motion?
It's the original one?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fig?
No.
Ms. Katanzright?
No.
Mr. Kanarecki?
No.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Krasinski?
No.
Mr. Nolan?
No.
Mr. File?
No.
Ms. Hess?
No.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Nine zero.
Okay, cool.
Let the record show that Bill Number 7422 did not pass by a vote of nine to zero.
Is there a way for me to resurrect?
So there's an amendment on the floor? Do I hear a second to that amendment? You want to restate that amendment?
I wanted to amend 7422 to show that instead of being an increase and salary change, to go with, keeping with what Mr. Kanarecki and what Mr. Nolan talked about, bonus seeing those employees now in the amount of $1,956 each. And when and if we go live in 2023, we would consider the additional bonus for the same amount, and that we can discuss salaries during budget discussions on those positions as a separate item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor?
I don't know if this was an oversight or if it was on purpose, but what you said was that go live in 2023. So that would mean December 30th, 2023.
I didn't give a date. As was indicated, I'm not certain where we're shooting for January, but there's a lot of factors that are going to affect that, I think.
If it's a performance bonus, should it be contingent on a deadline?
I guess I was understanding it would be January.
Yeah.
It would if they had all their data input and completed, but nobody else did, and it wouldn't go live in...
I guess if a compelling case was made to convince me otherwise, I would make that decision at that time. But I don't think I can...
Support that.
Support something that's a year and a half, but it's already, not because of HR, but it's already been over a year. It will be a year in January.
I'll modify my amendment to January of 2023. The second bonus would be effective January 2023, if we go live then. My second's...
Okay, there's amended, there's a motion per his amendment, and a second on the floor. Can we take the roll, Mr. Triple?
Yeah. Yes, take the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Katanzright? Kanarecki?
Katanzright, yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 7422, as amended, was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 8222? An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Ducom Center. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
This comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Randy Squadroni, Financial Coordinator, Ducom Center, 4161 Lathrop, South Bend, Indiana. We are requesting to increase case managers' pay from $35,000 to $38,000 due to the competitiveness with the detention officers and also trying to fill positions. As for the home detention case managers, these employees are training for management positions, and we have funds in there to pay them while they're training and then taking over these positions.
Any questions from counsel for Mr. Squadroni? Hearing now, I will open a public hearing on Bill 8222. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, the public hearing on 8222 is now closed. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 8222 was made by Councilman Kanarecki. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 8222 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 7722? An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Ducom Center. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy Squadroni, Financial Coordinator, Ducom Center. This is basically a similar request to increase the case managers from... a similar request to increase the case managers from $35,000 to $38,000. This is out of our community transition program, our CTP fund, and we appreciate your approval. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. I will open a public hearing on bill 7722. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing on 7722 is now closed. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Motion to pass bill number 7722 is made by Councilman Kanarecki. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Let the record show that bill number 7722 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 7822? An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Probate Court. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Cheryl Rush, Controller at St. Joseph Probate Court, 1,000 South Michigan Street. These positions are the Community Corrections Grant from IDLC. They're grant funded and a small portion is paid by probation user fees.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. I'll open a public hearing on 7822. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number 7822 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Kanarecki. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Let the record show that bill number 7822 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 7922? An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Adult Probation. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. Jesse Carlton, Chief Probation Officer with the St. Joseph County Adult Probation, offices located on the fourth floor of the county city building. The request before you is an appropriation of the pretrial grant funds that we received from the Indiana Office of Court Services. The grant total is an award of over, just over $143,000. Includes the salary for a supervisor probation officer, a line probation officer, 30% of their benefits, and $15,000 that is for contract services for public defenders at initial hearing.
Any questions from council for Mr. Carlton? Hearing none. I will open a public hearing on bill 7822. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 7922?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 7922 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Let the record show that bill number 7922 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 8022? An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Adult Probation. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. Jesse Carlton. This is an appropriation of grant funds that we received through the FSSA DMHA Community Coordination Grant. It's a grant award total of $108,000. Right now, we are just appropriating $96,000 of it, which includes the salary and all the benefits for a local justice reinvestment advisory council coordinator.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Carlton?
Mr. File, the only, the only question I have, these are by grants, and so they're not our taxpayer costs at this time. What happens when these grants run out? By what process do we review whether or not it becomes a taxpayer cost or not?
At, at that point in time, I would have to bring that before the council, and we would have to have that discussion on whether or not we would appropriate additional funds, where those would come from, and if we would continue any of these positions.
Okay, so that, and then also, this might affect our, our budget process again. You know, as these various items come up, as more and more people have grant money, then the possibility is that as those grants run out, that it'll be a sizable amount of money that we'll either have to terminate these jobs or it'll come back on the taxpayers. I'm just bringing it up as a basic subject, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. File. Any other questions from any council member? Hearing none. I will open a public hearing on bill number 8022. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on bill 8022.
Motion for passage.
Do I? Motion to pass bill number 8022 is made by Councilman Katanzright, seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on 8022? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 8022 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 8122? An ordinance amending ordinance 9521, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2022. Petitioner, Sheriff. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Stephen Noonan, Executive Officer for the Sheriff, offices 401 West Sample. This is coming from our multi-year domestic violence grant. We've asked for grant modification and received it from the Department of Justice. This would create a position for a full-time victim specialist, and would also, that would, would cover the benefits and for that position, and then also a part-time entry-level victim specialist, which actually more than likely would be a college student just seeking an internship as they go into this profession.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open a public hearing on bill 8122. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 8122?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number 8122 is made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on 8122? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 8122 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our May 24, 2022 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read bill number 6922? 6922, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government. May I have a motion on bill 6922?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 6922 is made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on 6922?
Just one item to point out that letter H was amended, to serve as a where. Yeah, you're right, absolutely.
Oh.
Thank you. I'll make an amendment that we remove F and change H to reflect the action that was taken earlier tonight.
Second.
Take a, so we devote any amendments? No, we can't take a voice.
I meant, I meant, no, I meant by you.
We got your roll call, yeah.
I said voice, I meant roll call.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta do the amendment first, then the, then we'll do the roll call on the amendment.
By roll call, though, right?
By roll call.
Right.
Must be by roll call. So...
Yeah. Point of order, according to Robert's rule, an amendment motion would take precedent over the final motion.
Correct.
So that you get your amendments in order.
No, I realize that. But I'm, but what we're saying is, since he's, Mr. File is on Zoom, we have to do that. We normally
Roll call.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we have to.
So? Are we good? You want me to take a roll right now? Sorry, man. I apologize. Okay. Mr. File, Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The amendment carries nine zero. Now, we would need to take a vote by roll call on the amended bill. Yes. Uh, so here we go. Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes, but no on J.
No on J. All right. And then, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes, but no on C. This is going to get messy.
Just a second. Okay, uh, Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
As amended.
Aye.
Mr. File, okay, he jumped the gun there. That's cool. Mr. Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Geez. Mr. Fig?
Yes, but no on J.
Okay. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Overall carries nine zero with one nay vote on item C and two on J. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 6922 as amended was passed nine to zero except two noes on J and one no on C.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kanarecki?
I may be misremembering things, but I don't recall that we voted on the amendment and the amended ordinance on 7422.
What? It was backwards.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think we voted on the amended ordinance, though.
I thought we did.
We did.
We did.
We did.
We did.
It was
We did.
A completely new, made us two separate votes.
Yeah.
Uh, we only voted twice, and we voted no to vote it down. Then we voted yes, but I don't remember us voting again. Do we vote? Do we vote three times? Then we only voted twice.
We voted twice.
So then we never voted on the amended ordinance.
I disagree.
What'd you say, Corey?
I disagree with the procedure, but that's fine. I didn't.
I thought, I thought we did it correctly. So we need to vote on 7422 as amended? Just vote on 7422 as amended?
Since it's been raised, I think.
Okay.
Sorry.
Do I hear a motion on 7422?
As amended.
As amended?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a vote, there was a motion on the floor and a second to vote on 7422 as amended? You want to take the roll call?
I'd love to. I gotta figure out how to do this now. Well, yeah. Okay, so I'm just gonna go with where we're at in the order, which I'm thinking we're, we're at Mr. Kanarecki, right?
Yes, and yes.
Um, 7422, it's worse than my scorecard, Wrigley Field. Mr. Kanarecki, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
I'm not sure anymore. Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Okay, that carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 7422, as amended, was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Okay, where the hell? Now we're at 6422. So now we are good on 6922, right, as amended, with the two yeses and a no? We're good there? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is land use planning. Clerk, will you please read bill number 6422? An ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Glenn and Fannie R. Wheeler for property being located at 56235 Ash Road. Petitioners Glenn and, Glenn L. and Fannie R. Wheeler. Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, this bill comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Very fine.
Yeah, good evening. This is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Staff, with offices on the 11th floor of this building. So this is for the property at the southwest corner of Vestula and Ash Road. It's immediately across the street from the Marina on Vestula. The property owner would like to store equipment related to the maintenance of the Marina facilities. In order to do so, they will need to get this special use for Marina activities in the B Business District. Uh, as you can see from the site plan, what's being proposed is a storage building and then parking for the Marina and future restaurant across the street. There are four criteria in the zoning ordinance that a special use must meet. Since this special use will still need to meet all of the development standards of the business district, we find that it the Business District, we find that it will not be injurious to public health, safety, comfort, community moral standards, convenience, or general welfare. We find that it will not injure or adversely affect the use of the adjacent area or property values therein, uh, as long as we condition this on, uh, the petitioner providing type-two landscaping along the western property line. That was a recommendation that was taken up by the, uh, Area Board of Zoning Appeals in their recommendation, and, um, the Land Use Planning Committee also, uh, made that condition in their favorable recommendation. Uh, the proposed use will be consistent with the character of the district. It will, um, since it is in the B Business District, uh, outdoor operations, storage will still be prohibited, and it'll need to meet the architectural standards of the district, and it is compatible with the recommendations of the St. Joseph County Conferensive Plan, which really doesn't contemplate any specific use in this area. And I am happy to answer any questions. Again, um, we recommend that it be granted with the condition that type-two landscaping be provided along the western property line. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from area plan? For area, area plan from council? Thank you. Petitioner?
Terry Lang from Lang Feeny, the Whitman Office here in South Bend. The address is seven fifteen South Michigan Street here in South Bend. Uh, petition before you is to basically move a building that was on the north side of the road, um, to accommodate for the restaurant. There's a need for, uh, a flat surface area for the handicapped, uh, parking for the restaurant. Uh, the building is being moved. The building you see on the north side of the, uh, Vestula right there, there was another building immediately adjacent to that that's been disassembled, and they'd like to reassemble it at the crosshatched area located on the south side. So it's a building that's already been on site, they're moving it so that they can maintain the snow plowing equipment, the mowing equipment and stuff, uh, for the Marina on site right there. And we don't have any problem with the staff recommendation at all with regards to the landscaping requirement that was requested.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we will open a public hearing on bill number sixty-four twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does any, anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed on sixty-four twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve it with the conditions as laid out by the area plan.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number sixty-four twenty-two is made by Councilman Root, seconded by Councilman Kenarecki. Any further comments from any council member regards to sixty-four twenty-two? With those conditions as were stated? Hearing, no comments. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Carries nine zero. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Morton. Ah, man.
Gotta do it all, man.
I... I didn't write it down. Yes.
Yeah, this is Robert Stamp Morton over there.
Well, I'm more interested in the, where I put the little dots for the who's up.
Let the record show that bill number sixty-four twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number sixty-five twenty-two?
An ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Fuchs Bobby and Betty J., trustees of the Fuchs Family Trust, with a life estate for property being located northeast of the intersection of the right-of-way of Quinn Road and US thirty-one, with an address of six-six-seven-hundred Kennelworth Road. Uh, petitioners Fuchs Bobby G. and Betty J., trustees of the Fuchs Family Trust, with a life estate.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number sixty-five dash twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hi, Ryan Fellows, area plan commission staff, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the seventh and eleventh floor of this building. Um, I've already gone through a lot of detail at the committee meeting level, but I will highlight that, um, this has been a, I would really call a good success story for, in terms of planning review. We did have a project advisory team meeting back in April with the building department, which included the floodplain administrator, county surveyor, health department, engineering and planning staff with the petitioner's representative. And in that process, we also, uh, reviewed this with the town of Lakeville because their, uh, sanitary sewer lagoons are on the north side of this property, and had, uh, reached out to the council member who represents this area, council member Fig, uh, gave him a chance to look into it as well. And then through that process, um, we've worked with the petitioner before this site was chosen, kinda chose a couple of other sites that may not be quite as good as this site for how close other houses were. The resident that lives closest to this site has furnished a letter saying that he is supportive of having a gun range at this location. And in the conversation during the, um, the committee meeting, we highlighted a few issues that we think it would be a good idea to have written commitments on. Those written commitments are being suggested. Here, I'll flip over to the written commitment screen here. Before, uh, the committee level, we talked about having, uh, making sure that the gun range is outside of any regulated wetland, outside any flood hazard area. During the committee meeting, we talked about having the hours of operation should be restricted to appointment only and not open to the general public so that all customers would receive prior review and approval from the business operator. And thirdly, any change in use would cause the property owner to remediate the site, uh, to the satisfaction of any regulatory agencies and include notifying the county, the county. And in that process, we, I corresponded with the health department several times to make sure we got the language that we wanted in here, and I did share this with the petitioner, and I sent Jennifer Askew to share with you, and we've passed it out here. Um, so I feel like we've addressed a lot of different issues and had a really successful review, uh, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions from council? Thank you. Petitioner?
Terry Lang from Lang Feeny, the Whitman Team here in South Bend at the address seven fifteen South Michigan Street. Um, the petition before you is a contingent purchase of, the contingent purchaser is Dan Birch. He is a Indiana State Police Officer. He does, on his days off, firearms training. It's done by private appointment only. It's done limited in numbers. Um, he's, lives about a mile away from this site and is looking for a site where he can take his trainees out to the site, hands-on, and, and actually fire the weapons they're learning. Um, it will most likely be handguns. Mr. Birch is here with us if you have any specific questions with regards to his hours of operation. It's only gonna be by appointment, it's gonna be only with regards to private, there will never be any public shooting at this site. We've had a discussion with regards to, um, the commitments that have been asked for. Um, we have no problem with any of the commitments whatsoever and are willing to make that commitment to the council for that to, uh, make everybody involved have a comfort level that the site will be cleaned up when it's done, and it's not gonna be open to the public, and that type of, uh, commitment is, is my client's desire.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Mr. File, one question I have is, this include assault weapons?
Uh, if you were listening, it is handguns.
Okay, just handguns, okay, thank you.
Okay, that was one question, to make sure that was limited to that, and then there, is there some kind of certi, safety certification or something that these people did?
Speak into the microphone, please.
Is there any kind of a certi, safety certification that these people are trying to achieve, uh, at the end of this training?
I guess you can, that would be a question that, uh, Mr. Birch would have to answer if you wanna come up here, please.
Good evening, Dan Birch. Oh, six-seven-one-zero-one, Ironwood Road, Bremen, Indiana.
So does this lead to some kind of safety certification? In other words, are you trying to train, provide safety training for these people? Is that the purpose of this gun range?
Uh, at the basic level, yes. Learning how to use a firearm in a self-defense context is a journey, and so some people start out brand-new with zero experience and background with firearms. So, uh, I meet the customer where they're at, as far as their experience level, to, uh, start them off, um, in a, uh, start them off with a, a, how to manipulate and use the firearm in a safe manner, and then the training, uh, the, uh, the training intensity increases from there, as far as from a basic-level safety class to an advanced applications class.
Okay, thank you.
I, I didn't really have a question, I just wanted to say thank you for addressing the remediation aspect and, and putting that in written commitment.
That's right.
Mr. Birch, uh, thank you for your service to our state.
Thank you.
Do you agree with the written commitments?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to have that on the record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Uh, just, just to reaffirm, the document, uh, specifically states that this is for handguns only, is that correct?
Yes, is that correct?
Okay, thank you.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm asking.
Okay, no, no, so the majority of my business is with handguns. Um, a very small portion of involves long guns, which would be a rifle and shotgun used for self-defense purposes. An assault rifle, the definition of that would be a full-auto weapon, and I do not do any training with full auto, fully automatic weapons.
Yeah, but I think, but I'm asking that that be in the agreement, that that be in writing, that there's no, uh, there can't be any assault weapons as part of what you're doing. I, I, I would request that be in writing. And if it's not, then, uh, then I think it should be.
Would there be a problem of adding that, 'cause I tend to agree with Mr. File?
Mr. Birch would like to know Mr. File's definition of a, an assault weapon? Because there's many different kinds of, uh, guns, and what is considered an assault weapon has been up for discussion at multiple levels in, in government right now, and, uh, so if he would like...
Well, we have too much trouble identifying it, I think we should just stick with handguns and be done with it. That way we don't have to worry about the definition.
I would like to propose that the definition of an assault rifle, assault weapon, would be a fully automatic weapon, and I have no intention of doing any training with fully automatic weapons.
Pardon me, but help me with, with the definition. If I've got a magazine of, of more than ten, uh, ten bullets and so on, um, is, is that not possible that you would be training for that? In other words, help me, help me with this definition, because, uh, you know, a rifle used for, for, uh, hunting purposes, um, I don't think is very hard to def, define as opposed to an assault weapon or a heavy-duty magazine, a piece of equipment. With everything going on in the world right now with, uh, the safety of our children and so on, I think it's a very sensitive subject and we need it in writing.
To give an understanding of what an assault rifle really is, my issued, my department-issued rifle is a semi-automatic rifle that is capable of taking a thirty-round magazine. It is not considered to be an assault weapon, an assault rifle. An assault weapon or assault rifle is capable of fully automatic fire, which means that the weapon continues to fire with, as long as the trigger is pressed. Any other weapon outside of fully, fully automatic, um, operation, uh, is only capable of one shot with each trigger press, which is no different than any other handgun. Semi-automatic, excuse me.
It's my understanding that an individual who's skillful can, uh, can fire that at a very, very rapid rate despite the fact that they have to pull the trigger each time. So I, I have a problem with that whole area. If the only way to resolve it is to restrict this to handguns, that's what I think we should do.
Can I respond again? Go ahead, okay. So, uh, one of the conditions, um, is that, uh, every customer is vetted, and, uh, I vet every single customer that I train. The majority of my business is with church security teams, and, uh, I am in the business of training law-abiding citizens on how to use firearms for self-defense purposes. So, uh, uh, the, the type of weapon is not of concern, my concern is who I'm training.
If I could, to be clear, in addition to the written commitments that you said you were agreeable to, did I understand that you're also agreeable to no fully automatic weapons?
Yes, I'm agreeable to no, no fully automatic weapons.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we will open a public hearing on bill sixty-five twenty-two. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does any, anyone wish to speak in opposition of sixty-five twenty-two? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I'll make the motion to pass bill number sixty-five twenty-two with the commitments.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number sixty-five twenty-two with the, with the commit, written commitments, was made by Councilman Fig, it was seconded by Councilman Root. Any further comments from any council member on sixty-five twenty-two?
Just is, is your intention to include the verbal ones?
Yeah, the verbal commitment.
About the fully automatic?
Yes.
Okay.
I took that as a commitment, so I know it's not written.
Being clear.
Okay, thank you.
The verbal commitment.
Verbal commitment.
No, I'm sorry, the verbal commitment, sorry.
Thank you.
Did you wish to have that as, as part of the written commitment, or do you mean that as a verbal?
Yes.
Written.
That's, yeah, that's why I said written, but if you're saying verbal.
And fully automatic weapons to the written commitment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Any further comments on sixty-five twenty-two?
I would like to see the document written the way we're talking about before we vote to do this. Because I don't have a document in front of me that I can vote yes on.
I would say that we didn't have the written document for the other bills that we amended in front of us either. We never do. I don't understand. I do not need to see that.
I don't have to see it.
Nope.
Any further comments on sixty-five twenty-two? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes, with the amended, with, with the amendment? Added amendment.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes, with the written amendment.
Ms. Hess?
Yes, as amended.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number sixty-five twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you. Um, on bill number sixty-six twenty-two and sixty-seven twenty-two, we will have a combined public hearing and a separate vote. Clerk, will you please read those bills?
Would you like me to read both?
Yes. We'll have a combined public hearing and separate vote.
Okay. Sixty-six twenty-two, an ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Sandra K. Wolf and Sandra K. Wolf, uh, quarter in, intra, I don't know what that means.
Interest.
Interest. Betty Jane Hillring, one-quarter interest, uh, Evli Irene Clark, one-quarter interest, and Marcia Ann Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, Marta Rae Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, Gregory P., Gregory R. Clark, um, one-twenty-fourth interest, uh, Bruce Rae Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, Bryce J. Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, Jeffrey Lynn Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, for property being located at one-zero-one-one-three and one-zero-one-five-three McKinley Highway. Petitioner Sandra K. Wolf, sixty-six twenty, sixty-seven twenty-two. An ordinance amending and supplementing tunnel fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty-four planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code is amended for property located at one-zero-one-one-three and one-zero-one-five-three McKinley Highway from our single-family, uh, district to C. Commercial District. Petitioner Sandra K. Wolf, Sandra K. Wolf, one-quarter interest, Betty Jane Hillring, one-quarter interest, Evli Irene Clark, one-quarter interest, Marcia Ann Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, Marta Rae Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, Gregory R. Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, Bruce Rae Clark, one-two, one-twenty-fourth interest, uh, Bryce J. Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest, and Jeffrey Lynn Clark, one-twenty-fourth interest.
Very fragmented ownership of the property, yes. Alright, uh, Ryan Fellows here, Plan Commission Staff again. Um, this is obviously already discussed at the, uh, committee level, this is for a special use permit to allow this to be pontoon boat sales and to rezone to allow for commercial. So here's a view of McKinley Road, and this is the property itself, and then looking the opposite direction east. And then there's a site plan of the proposed property, a little bit zoomed in, you can kinda get an idea of what is being proposed. And in looking at the criteria, the area plan commission recommends favorably, and also for the criteria for the special use permit, also favorably. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council for area plan? Petitioner?
Thank you. Mike Danch from Danch Hardin and Associates, sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioners. Um, as we had done at the land use committee meeting, what we're asking for is rezon-
As we had done at the land use committee meeting, what we're asking for is rezoning for the property that Ryan had mentioned on McKinley. Coastline Inc., who does pontoon sales and servicing for pontoon boats, would like to move their business from Home Street in Mishawaka to this particular property that contains approximately twelve-point-seven-seven acres. As shown on the preliminary site plan, what they are proposing to do is to build a thirty thousand square foot building. That building would house not only the offices for Coastline Inc., but it would also have for the servicing area for the pontoon boats and also for storage. What we have shown on the site plan is to the east of the building, there would be a parking area, there would also be a display area along McKinley Highway that you see there. As the staff had mentioned, we're meeting all the landscaping requirements. This particular property is about one property removed from the Indiana Earth facility, which is located to the west of this property. It's about six-hundred-and-twelve feet or so west of Ash Road. So this is right in that corridor where we have a mix of uses that is going on. The Indiana Earth property is zoned industrial. We're only asking to do the C. commercial. What we had shown here is the limited area that they could use for outside storage. Again, that has to be screened as you see on our site plan, not only with landscaping, but also with fencing as well completely. This would be serviced by septic and well. All drainage would have to be handled on-site per the, the county standards. The back portion of the property is going to remain wooded. This property goes back almost a quarter-mile to the old railroad right-of-way that is along the very north boundary. As Ryan had also mentioned, this is kind of a, a two-step process that we're doing here. We're also asking for the special exception and that's for the servicing of the pontoon boats, which is only going to be inside the building. So any kind of servicing is only inside the, the structure, it will not be done outside. What we would ask for is your favorable approval for both the rezoning request and also for the special exception. And if you've got any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, any questions from council for the petitioner?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing on bills sixty-six twenty-two and sixty-seven twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of sixty-six twenty-two or sixty-seven and sixty-seven twenty-two? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of either sixty-six twenty-two or sixty-seven twenty-two? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on both bills. May I have a motion on sixty-six twenty-two?
Motion for approval.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number sixty-six twenty-two was made by Councilman Root, is that correct? And seconded by Councilman Kennericky. Any further comments on sixty-six twenty-two? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kennericky?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you, let the record show that bill number sixty-six twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. May I have a motion on bill number sixty-seven twenty-two?
I move approval.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number sixty-seven twenty-two was made by Councilman Root. It was seconded by Councilman Kennericky and a third was made by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments on sixty-seven twenty-two?
Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kennericky?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you, let the record show that bill number sixty-seven twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes public hearing for this evening. Next on the agenda, any miscellaneous items? Next is any unfinished business?
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, as a moment of unfinished business, I'd like to make a quick announcement that tonight we'll represent the last full public council meeting, I'll be attending as a member of the staff. I've decided to move on to work in education. My wife is high school chemistry teacher and I wish to become a civics teacher. And so I've decided to move on and I very much enjoyed my three years I've been here. I just wanted to thank everyone for my time here and thank you.
Where are you, where are you going? What school are you going to?
I am not sure yet.
Okay.
So.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Would it make any difference, would you decide to stay if we got you a two-wheel car or a wagon or something?
That is, that is a very good question, but I, I am resolved, but thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do.
We need civics education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Next is, next on the agenda is new business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes on items not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening, thank you for your, all of your long, hard work tonight. Deborah Doral, two-one-six-seven-seven Otten Road, South Bend. I'm here to share that not too long ago, I was finishing up a hot, hard day working on the farm and wanted to go home and crash and instead I decided to go for a walk at St. Pat's Park. St. Pat's Park is a little bit different than some of our other parks in that there is no heavy industry or traffic bordering the park. And as I walked into the deep woods section, the temperature dropped about fifteen degrees and all of the fumes that I had been breathing in the air were gone. And just an unstoppable smile and my energy just rose from that pleasant experience and completely turned my day around. And so I'm here to encourage you to take advantage of those kinds of places that St. Joseph County has done such a nice job in providing for us. And you probably know about the twenty-five million dollars that Indiana has now committed to conservation projects and I would like to encourage the county to consider taking advantage of that money to further enhance our parks in the deep woods parts of these parks such as maybe the Portage Woods has some very large trees and also Rum Village has some very large trees and land that could be expanded that has often been talked about. And the National Resources Defense Council has identified our large mature trees as being the best technology to date to combat climate change. And so I think this is something that on a hot day when we're all driving around in our cars on our cellphones with our engines running and the hidden emissions that are happening as we are running around doing our jobs, remember the parks and the benefit that it provides to all the citizens in this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is adjournment, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't see you, my apology.
I should have spoken up. And I apologize for my attire, I didn't plan on speaking. My name is Mike McManus, five-one-nine-four-zero, Lilac Road. I didn't feel it appropriate to make a comment on the presentation about the gun site because I didn't know enough about it and I trust that you have taken a good look at it from a safety perspective. I have a niece who twenty-five years ago was shot. She was shot by what we would usually consider law-abiding citizens, two off-duty police and an off-duty military personnel from a nearby military base. Not, not here, I lived in Virginia at the time. So I would just like to ask all members of the council that at any time you are discussing proposals regarding the shooting of any weapons, that there be appropriate safety measures to make sure that people who aren't doing anything, she was in daycare, who, who are just innocently out there can't accidentally be shot. So please keep that in mind, that may be part of the proposal and that's why I didn't want to interrupt what was going on, but please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammond?
Seriously? Okay, my bad. I forgot about this, guys, I apologize. And ladies, Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Ms., Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kennericky?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan? Of course. Mr. File?
Hell, yes.
Did I say it, Ms. Hess?
Yes.
And then Mr. Morton?
Yes.
It carried eight to one.